Okay, like the public meeting for August 28th, 2012, for the order. Planning board meeting. We don't have minutes for July 28th, so skip that. Anybody want to amend or make changes to the agenda? The public hearing is scheduled for 6:15, so we'll leave that until we get to 6:15. Everybody's all right with that?
Yeah, I have something. Do we really have to have this Schuman guy on here?
We requested it.
We must on here and have to get that passed.
If there's no objections, accept the agenda?
No, I make a move and we accept the agenda. That's because I'm just questioning this process, but before you make that. Did you mention in an email that you were planning on adding something to the agenda? Did I add that today?
Yes, I just wanted to add a discussion about the decision that the ZBA made. And we want us to have a discussion about it.
Okay.
Since we can add it to the agenda if you'd like, but it's time sensitive and it wasn't something that we can weigh on. So it's just... Most of what we want to add to the agenda?
Add it to the agenda. Then we add it to the agenda.
A second. All in favor?
I'd like to add something about the master plan, but I can either do it under public speak is the other option.
Yeah, I'm fine if you want to do it under public speak or when you're out here for something else.
Yeah, permit extension legislation.
So I'm fine if you want to just do it under your...
Okay, that's fine.
Anything else?
Where did you add?
I don't know why I'm just talking.
Okay. So we'll have to make a new motion to accept the minutes as amended.
He did. Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor.
I proposed. Next time you vote for a sound.
All right. There are no A and Rs. The Sprint Nextel application for site plan approval. I'd like to open that up for discussion and note that the applicant has asked for an extension to the next meeting because she was unable to appear at this meeting. So today, maybe you want to discuss now or if you want to save it for the next meeting. It's probably more efficient if we just wait.
Yeah, I think we can wait.
Continue or just... Make the motion to continue it to the next meeting.
I'll move to continue it to the next meeting.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay. City planner.
Okay, so there's two items. One, let me just do the master plan one quick. We had one member of the master plan implementation committee resign due to work schedule conflicts, and so we are one member down. In the same sort of day, I had been notified by somebody who was interested in participating. It's a professional artist in town. I think this is actually a segment of the community that's missing on the current master plan implementation committee and should be represented. So I asked him to draft a letter, and here are copies of his letter. So you'll need to review this and consider whether you want to...
My information had us from the original selection at, I think, a total of 10 members. And then we lost one, putting us at nine. The 10th member, we were going to set the latest one that had joined to be an associate number. We lost one, which put us at the appropriate, an odd, I don't want to say appropriate, an odd number for voting purposes. So this would put us back up to one of them would have probably the last one, this one, to an associate number, I think.
So I wasn't there the night that the committee was voted in. Was it voted in as a nine-member committee with one alternate, or was it not stated as having a specific number?
I think it was voted in as they were all, and then at the meeting, they were going to select an alternate. An alternate. Right.
And we discussed various ways they could determine the alternate, but left it up to them.
That was agreed upon, which put the number sort of nine. Now, no one ever specifically said nine will be the number going forward. Everyone sort of said, wow, it's convenient. It came out to, you know, this odd, and then we had this one extra come in late.
It's my understanding though through Barbara though, that we do need to set a number.
An actual number.
An actual number, advertise those vacancies, and go through the appropriate administrative process in terms of having sworn in. And they cannot officially begin work until they've been sworn in, and there have been term limits that have been set on the numbers, which was not discussed previously either.
I'll make sure that at that first meeting that we all know, you know, that everyone's reminded to go and move before meetings.
What about the term?
Now, do we have to ask the planning board? Because now, our last time we voted, it was just being left up to the committee.
That's right.
Now, should we vote to say that the master plan committee should consist of nine members with additional alternates, or let the committee decide that?
I believe they're your committees. It's your subcommittee. I think you should set the rules on how you want the committee formed. That's my opinion.
I'd like to make a motion that we set the master plan committee at nine members, and any additional people that want to join can come in as alternates.
I think we should probably set a maximum on alternates too, just so it's not an unwieldy group. I mean, I think two or three is pretty reasonable for a number of people that are there.
Yeah, but... So we don't really want to deny people from going on. I mean, I'm not sure. I don't think there is a limit on alternates. Am I not mistaken?
I believe there is a limit on alternates.
Most other boards have a stated number of members and alternates.
Do we know the number?
But...
Do we know the number?
It doesn't mean that the public can't come and participate.
Right. I also am not opposed to in six months or however long, if the committee comes to the planning board and says, you know, we now have these people and we're looking for these changes, to listen to the subcommittee and make changes afterwards. I mean, I don't think that if we vote on this in the next meeting or whatever, that it's set in stone and it can never be changed.
And that was what we discussed at the first meeting, is the issue with the alternates. And if more people showed up, we would allow them to sort of determine and come to us for our approval as to if there were changes that need to be made. And I believe we also discussed if who would become, who would move on from an alternate onto the board, right? And that we would take your recommendation, but that we would still approve that. So I think that everyone's on the same page with that, that this is not like a one meeting we're done with.
And I think to your point, in terms of we don't want to turn people away that can be helpful, and there's a lot of people in the community, we can kind of nest subcommittees at infinitum so that members of the subcommittee could put together a little group and invite people from the...
Well, I love saying that because when I was on conservation, we had five alternates because there was so much interest in it. So we just named alternates, and I'm not sure if that was the limit at that time or what the limit is.
Barbara did send an email saying that she wanted numbers. I saw that too. So why don't we just make it three alternates?
I think that makes sense.
Since this wasn't an agenda item, do you want to go on it at the next meeting, or does it sound like you feel comfortable?
Our next meeting is on the 13th. The first meeting, I should say. The 13th is the first meeting.
First September?
Six o'clock.
So our meeting is the 11th, so we could...
We could do it.
Let's review this application and finish up anything else that seems like unfinished business and get this all...
You mentioned that you had self-imposed term limits, or they were discussed or something? What was the number?
It was Barbara. She had said that term limits need to be set.
And did she set, or did she suggest a term limit, or?
Typically, when you start a board, that was something that we were supposed to have done, was stagger the terms. There were supposed to be X number for a year, X number.
Well, I think when we originally discussed it, it was going to be at will as long as people weren't interested in doing it. We replaced the vacancies as they came up, but it sounds like Barbara at least thinks that that's the way to do it.
If we give a term limit, then people, I think, feel more of a sense of goal obligation in a way.
And they also know that it's not an endless path, that if they want to have a limited service to the community, they sign on for their term, and then they can feel comfortable if they don't have the time to reinvest, to end it. So I mean, I think it works both ways. It lets...
Terms here are two, am I correct? Two years?
Yeah.
That sounds like the number we should choose.
But we want to stagger it now.
Well, maybe it makes sense to look at the roster at that next meeting and just pick the top five names and make them two-year terms, and the bottom ones will be one-year terms, and they can...
And go from there.
And then at least it's alternating years. So I don't know where I'm positioned.
Don't make a long decision.
Yeah, because then you're not having everyone coming up the same time.
At least then, yeah, you're coming off at different intervals, so.
I'll make it so.
Okay, so we'll talk about that agenda for the next meeting.
And I think it's fine. I mean, the committee can, or the board can think about it before we have our next meeting. I don't mind letting the subcommittee decide who takes the two and one-year terms to get this rolling. At your first meeting, you guys want to organize it, do it however you think is the best way to do it, and then just...
And also do the first five in, and then the second five in. You know, as far as the letters that came in, or if there's something on there, that you can do the first five for one year and the second five for two, and then an alternate for whatever, one or two.
I'll manage it.
Jess, you got a second item?
Yeah, just quickly, as our focus for the public hearing.
You got another five minutes?
So I sent those to you in an email just to let you know that there was new legislation that was passed by the governor on August 8th. This is extending, it was a permit extension legislation that was passed in 2010, and it basically said that for any municipal permit that was within September 15th, 2008, September, or August 15th, 2008 to August 15th, 2010, if the expiration fell within that timeframe, they were extended another two years beyond that. So for special permits, in our case, they have a two-year, you know, valid, they are extended another two years beyond that. Basically, because we had this huge economic downturn, people couldn't get financing, so, you know, we shouldn't be expiring their permits because they can't get money to be able to build their projects. So they just extended it for another two years, essentially. So now there's a four-year extension for, based on that expiration date. So you have all the information, it's forwarded to you, there's a very long, frequently asked questions, you should go through it. So it's applicable for all permits that were, that this board puts out for special permits in site plan reviews. So you just need to be aware. I just wanted to make you aware that it is out there, and you should look at the material. Okay? Thank you.
Harry, do you want to... Go in three minutes, or do you want to go after the...
No, I want to be more strict. You know, I mean, I probably don't either, but I have a discussion with that.
You're going to use it.
Is there any other business? How about public speak? We didn't have that. Anybody here have anything to speak about that's not on the agenda?
Can I ask if you've been able to schedule a public hearing date for the amendment for section 11.12?
I have not gotten a response back. My last communication was that if we don't figure it out by the end of this week, we're just going to schedule a singular meeting for the 25th.
September 25th.
Seems like it takes forever, waiting for a minute to go by.
Unless you're doing something, you have only got two minutes to do it, then, you know, flies away.
I looked at it, and oh my God, it just quit to 6:13.
Final minute if you're on the turnpike.
It was a nice day today after the rain stuff. We're supposed to have a good run next week. It's supposed to be great weather.
I guess we're supposed to get some bad weather by the end of the week, but...
Nice to see those ponds go up at Wycombe. It's going to be really low. It looks like they're really dry, given we got a rain like today, and it just instantly just blew it up. Although it runs up to the pond.
Yeah, yeah.
All the bros started running.
That's what we needed.
We're up on Route 2 this past weekend, wherever the river is along Route 2 there, past Stroud Mountain, the rest of that is, I mean, it's a trickle. I've never seen it that way.
Yeah, it was very, most really.
Gone.
I don't watch storms like that.
Rain falls like that. All right, I guess we can open the public hearing. The planning board and the tree warden regarding shady trees on Palmero Meadow Road.
Mr. Chairman, this is a joint public hearing. I request five Western Mass Electric Company to remove 10 trees on Palmero Meadow Road. The trees have been duly posted. Has been advertised successfully in the Gazette two successive weeks, on the 18th and 26th. And the butters were notified by mail. And we are here to let public opinion or questions on the 10 trees located on the western side of Palmero Meadow Road that are being requested by Western Mass Electric Company to be removed as part of their hazardous tree removal program. Any comments or questions of me?
What was the reason for, I don't know if we're reading it, but what was the actual reason for wanting to take them completely down?
Mr. General here from Western Mass Electric, I can answer that for you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Calvin Layton. I'm the senior arborist with Western Mass Electric. With me is Ed Sturtevant. He's my arborist assistant. He's in charge of the project, but this is part of Western Mass Electric's enhanced tree trimming, where we are trying to storm harden particular circuits that have given us problems in the past. In the last four years, as everybody has noticed, the storms have ticked up a notch. And we're responding to that by trying to increase our tree trimming in areas where we have vulnerability, particularly to our three-phase and backbone system. And Palmero Meadow is three-phase, and it connects to the next town. And we would like to, there are some trees that are coming out of the western side, as Stuart mentioned, and they're trees that are growing for the light, which is where our lines are, and they're long and leggy, and they're the species that we feel eventually give us a real problem. So now's the time to get rid of them, and we've selected this circuit to do this trimming on. We're actually doing trimming on the circuit from, trimming and tree removal for about, what, two miles on that circuit? So it's part of a larger project to give stiff in the backbone in East Hampton, which will give you more reliability and more storm proofness.
What are those species of trees? The shady trees?
So there's, let's see, five ashes, one sycamore, a maple, a cottonwood, a piggnet hickory, and one cherry.
And the reason is because they're growing up too high and are reaching towards the sky and it's interfering with the actual line?
They're growing over the line? So they're growing over and towards the line?
Sort of, they're a threat to collapse on it.
Yes.
Yeah, of the 10 trees, there's three or four ash which are in decline. And ash is a species throughout the England, as they call it, ash decline. And so the ash are just, they're declining pretty sharp. There's two or three elements that you can argue whether or not they're in decline, but they're, the way they're grown, there's structural issues with them. You know, like a large hole down in the root area, one of them. I would say the strongest tree of the 10 out there is probably the sycamore. The sycamore is at, is close to the Southampton Bridge. You know, it's the healthiest and strongest tree of the whole bunch. All the other ones have an issue, whether or not it be structural or with the vigor of the tree. But the sycamore, you know, that's a real big winner. That sucker's already probably at 65 feet. It's on the bank, it's coming way out, way over the road, going to be way up over the wires on the other sides. So that's their concern. But, you know, as a standalone tree of the 10, it's probably the healthiest of the group.
Some of the trees on the road have been hit by either trucks or plows or other things. Some of the damage has been, due to the trees are so close and leaning over the road, and there's vines hanging off of them, so you can't tell where the tree is.
So that sycamore, that can't be trimmed enough to keep it?
Well, it might be able to be trimmed, but one of the things that I have to deal with, one of the things that I have to deal with as a result of often trimming trees in that circumstance is usually a large part of the outward half is taken away. And what's left behind often is not that attractive looking, and you get more vocal screaming over what you left behind versus, you know, leaving it.
You're in favor of the trees being removed?
I don't have, I don't have any issues in here at all with any of these trees. I don't oppose any of them being removed. After we had the Palmero Meadow Road was a street that, probably 30, 40 years ago when I was younger, it had the big, big sugar maples along it. You're very close to this street, you remember those trees all fell apart. They were huge butts. We just probably took the last butt down around six or seven years ago. You know, so they were right alongside the road, literally didn't give much room for truck mirrors or whatever, but they've all gone away. This group was kind of like the next group behind halfway down the bank that have come along, you know, and as most trees seek the light, so that's why some are weeping way out, you know, as they're growing. I have, and I did mention to the fellows, there's a few in there that I do want to protect, but at the toe of this slope, down where the farmer's barbed wire fence runs, there's sugar maple in there. Some, it's in what I call the seven to 12 or 14 inch range. There's maybe a handful of them. They're pretty nice, looking pretty good. They're far enough off the road where maybe they won't get affected by salt. So I'm kind of hoping that that's, that's the next stuff that gets, you know, gets kept and kind of comes behind. I'm really fond of the sugar maple anyway.
Yeah, that's true. But it's just that I'm not very fond of seeing trees come down. I do a lot, we're walking through the woods, I like to see the stands of tree. And of course, you're in the middle of the woods, you don't care how high the trees are because you're not going to, you're not going to be affected by wiring or anything. If these trees come down and you can save that one, is there anything that can be replaced that at least give it something? I mean, just, you know, just cut it down and then there's going to be a wide open space.
The replacements are already there.
The replacements are there. This is not a place that I would plant. We're not talking like...
Those are the ones that are next to the ones coming down. Those are the ones that are going to be...
It's extremely, it's a wet area along these banks.
Right.
There's a lot of undesirable vegetation in there too. There's a lot of poison ivy, bittersweet, you know, vines, grapevine. So it's pretty thick, and it's not a place I would plant. There's not, even with these trees gone, you know, the high canopy will go away, but the vegetation is going to be there. And all these smaller trees are all in this area that are all going to come along. If it was a different circumstance with not a lot of stuff behind it, you know, certainly I would ask for maybe some plantings or consider plantings, but I don't have that concern here.
You said this was a three-phase or a backbone? Three-phase means what?
It's, there's three wires in the pole instead of a single wire, and our backbone is what all the lights feed off of. So a single phase off, that would be called a lateral versus a backbone. So this, so if you have an outage on a three-phase line, you're going to put a whole lot more people out than you will on a single-phase line. So that's why we focus our resources initially on the three-phase portion of the circuit for our trimming. We're on a four-year cycle for trimming. We'll be in town next year to be trimming these circuits on our normal cycle. This program is in addition to that to give us, to take care of some of these trees that are at risk. And I think, you know, our responsibility to you as town folks is to give you safe and reliable power. And we do that by getting rid of trees that are going to be a hazard, because not only is it an inconvenience to have your power out, but it could be a literal safety hazard when you've got live wires in the ground because this tree came down. I don't like to take down sycamore trees because I really love them. They're probably one of the nicer, harder trees we have. This particular one is just too much of a leaner. And when we take a third out of the top, its chances of survival are probably slim. George and I work together pretty well. We'll look at a tree and we'll say, yeah, we can trim this one, we can prune this one. Yeah, this one needs to go. We're both certified arborists, probably within about a year of each other. So in this particular case, we look at the tree, says, should we save it? Should we not? No, I think this probably needs to go. It's just, you know, it's just one of those trees that hits the list, so.
Yeah, what do the neighbors think about this? If people live there, what do they think about this?
They think it's a good idea.
You live there?
Yeah.
Any other response from the, you said you notified the butters? Have you heard anything, or?
All the butters got a mail in, both sides of the road. And the other side's, one general holds a little swath on the other side. But, you know, the law's been followed, everybody's been notified. I got no, I got no early phone calls, no concerns from anyone either at the office or any other way.
Is our role approval or recommendation? What are we supposed to do here?
I'm not exactly sure, because this is the first time that this is, I mean, the law has changed.
You know, the laws, why we're here is because I read the laws again, and I know that there's some nuances in a law, and what was in this chapter right here. A consolid, all hearings now will be consolidated, and I'm sure that's so these people or other people like them don't have to jump through multiple hoops if somebody objects to get it done in one spot. So I guess it's my responsibility, but I don't know what the pecking order is as to, as we, I think they're the input people and I'm the deciding people in this joint...
It's a joint public hearing, and normally there would, I mean, if there's two entities that are holding a public hearing, they would need to vote on the condition of the hearing and then close it. So my suggestion would, just to be safe, that they should take a vote to approve, deny, whatever, and that, so that's in the record, that you voted on it, and then you vote to close the hearing like you would, like it's a zoning by law.
And then they notify me in writing?
Sure, yep, notify you in writing.
And then I notify them.
And then you would notify them, right? Keep the paper trail. And file all notifications with the city clerk as well.
I don't recall the circumstances, but there was something where city council was involved before.
Well, there's a process. If anyone were to object here to a tree being cut, they have to do it in writing, and then it moves up, and it would either be the mayor or the city council. I think in our circumstances, it's the city council?
Probably.
I think it's the city council.
Maybe from the jurisdictional. Because we had that walk on, when you did the power line for the solar field.
Right. So the one question I have too is that you said you have, you do this on a four-year basis, basically.
Right.
If it was to come up again for tree cutting, they'd still, they'd still have to come to us again?
Any public shade tree?
Yes, any public shade tree in Massachusetts that is being requested to be cut down has to go to hearing. That's been in books now from all over.
Well, the right is huge.
Their cycle, the cycle that they're talking about is their trimming cycle.
Right.
And as they've explained, what they're talking about here is that the 23,000 volt lines that move usually through or in a loop around the community and bring the major high voltage distribution power through the town from one substation to another, or from a substation to a town and along to another town. So the efforts that are often, the efforts that, the 23,000 lines over the last 30 years, the efforts put into them has changed quite a bit since I was a younger guy. They put much more energy into it, some of it my dislike or whatever, but that's our business. You know, because of what's, it's, it's the stuff that when it hits the ground explodes and causes big fires, and it's extremely dangerous. So they've consistently, over the decades, have looked to expand their clearances and remove trees that they feel will be a problem for them. So that's the circuit that they're talking about. This is not... This is not necessarily practice that happens on every street and round.
Yeah, it's too bad then we have to have poles with the power lines instead of underground.
Based on the trifecta of our trusted warden, electric company and a lack of individuals from that community objecting, I'd like to recommend that a full member make a motion to approve.
I don't have any other questions.
I have no other questions.
I'd make a motion that we would approve the proposed removal of the shade trees on Pottery Meadow Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Abstained?
Yeah.
So, one extension and four yeses. Anything else?
We're going through our hearing.
I gotta, I gotta, it shouldn't be called any shade trees. It shouldn't be called shade trees. Well, seriously.
I don't think we have the power to change that.
When talking to a shade tree, I think of these big fluffy maple trees, like three feet wide.
Is this terminology for deciduous trees? Is this a proper shade tree?
Well, if you understand the origination of the law, which goes back to the eighteen hundreds, before electricity was around, there were no trees. And this law was enacted to protect anything growing on the side of the road so they could have shade trees. That's what they wanted, so the goal of this law was to protect roadside trees, because there were none. So, it's just really, it's interesting people don't understand that when this law is...
Even though it's been lost over the years and it's losing more momentum as time goes on, but, you know, back then, these people saw street trees, public shade trees as within a public interest. They were the greater public interest. Most singular property owner held a burden over them, nor did the public side hold a burden over them, because the public side had to jump through the hoops to meet the requirements. So, that's what it was about, they felt that, you know, there was a greater interest here, there was the general population of the community that gained something from these trees, and that's what brought this about.
Thank you all for bringing this to us.
You're welcome. Thank you for your vote.
I just moved to close the joint meeting, public hearing.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Three seconds.
Thank you. Thank you.
You see, there's a three-year.
See, in four years.
Wasn't next year the four?
Next year, yeah. Next year. Next year they'll have a logic problem.
Yeah, sure.
I don't want to turn this to another ramble, sort of cut every tree down, it's up to every generation, here's going crazy, they're cutting everything.
But I remember quite a power outage last October, I love trees.
You could get them by a power outage. They would have a free storm.
But this is preventative, you know?
Well, cut every tree down itself.
I think that's a difference.
We can balance somewhere. Every year in that tree of light, hold on, the tree gives life, every year that, hold this, it's a good.
They cut trees, they went, I don't know, through the green. What's next? Harry speaking?
We overuse ourselves?
Guys aren't gonna get away with it either.
You can't all sit in the bathroom at the same time.
All right, well, I've been on the CPA board all over. To be honest, we have not really shared all along. I think I spent at least two years or natter, natter is somewhere. And the reason I'm on the CPA, because I represent the planning board, okay? They needed a volunteer about a couple of years ago, I go to the CPA and I volunteer. So, anyway, when I go to CPA board, things come up that are just common, that are like a common sense type of thing, like housing may want a few blocks to put up a new wheelchair ramp or something like that, so we'll give them like ten grand or twelve grand, it's all under bid, and that type of thing. But recently, we've had a couple of rather big expenditures come along, and I thought it formed the way I thought I should do properly. But, one night, I got this list of things that were done by the CPA for the last year from the chair, Mr. Bob Harrison, and I sent a copy to Ron, figured he might be interested to see what's going on with CPA. Well, he came back, I mean, and said that he wouldn't really be in favor of voting for the windows at Riverside Industries. And another member also approached me about that same thing, so I'm saying, so all of a sudden now, I'm saying to myself, I'm on a CPA representing the board, I'm not going to the CPA representing myself, you know what I mean? So, what I propose to do is, if I get a copy of the agenda or something that's big coming along on the CPA, I wanna discuss it with the board. So, I'll have an input, you know, what the board thinks, you know, not what I think. So, when I go to CPA and then I make a vote, I'll be representing the board, not my point of view. So, anyway, I thought I run it by you guys, what'd you think of it?
I think that's very sensitive of our needs, but I question it too. You have to be able to vote your conscience, each individual does.
And I think the requirement that you're there, I mean, I think it's comparable to sort of, you know, when we're talking about putting together a master plan implementation committee and pulling people from different areas of expertise, I think it's just that you are somebody that is on the planning board and has that sort of connectedness to the planning part of the city. I don't, I don't think you're speaking for all of us, I think that, I mean, if you don't wanna do it anymore, I think we could try to find someone else to do it.
I love going there, just, I don't wanna be voting for something, and something comes up and I say, vote for something, and then, you know, you guys pick up the paper and say, well, Christ, the CPA just, you know, initiated funds for, just going, wow, I don't want that.
We may do that, but...
The same, but you have Mary Schuman vote, not the planning board.
Well, that's the thing, I wanna make sure, I wanna represent the board.
But the board is, you are representing the board, it's not about us collectively telling you how to vote, we're saying that the board trusts your judgment, and even if your vote is not the same as another member's vote, it still represents the planning board's point of view or perspective. I think that the problem is, is that if we all, if you seek too much input, you're gonna be sort of second guessing yourself and...
Delay of approach.
No, I'm not a second guess.
No, no, I mean, I just think your performance could be less, less than it is if you just vote your conscience. Yeah, I wasn't opposed to the windows per se, I wished, I just wished that they would have put plans in place so that if the building was transferred in less than twenty years, that money would have went back to the CPA. That's what we used to do, we did with other, other things, that, there should have been a few hooks to protect.
Well, see, if I would have known that, I could have brought that up. Because all I know is what I know, and I go there and, you know, things are presented. And if I have all the different points of view, like something like that, then I'm sure Jesse knows a lot more about laws, certainly more than I know. Then I could say, well, look at, under the law or down the road or whatever, we can initiate this, this, or at least put conditions on some of the votes.
I think what it is too is, what Mary's looking for is just informative. We don't have to take a vote and say, Harry, you should vote this way and that way. He still has to vote his way. The point that you just brought up, if he came and said, you know, this is what I'm gonna be looking at and voting on, what do you think? Just informational. We don't have to say, Harry, you should vote this way and that way.
No, I think it's...
You disagreed on that, and I could disagree, or we could all disagree, but it's up to Harry.
I don't think Harry's vote is planning board business, I mean, I think that the issues that are there, I mean, we're all East Hampton residents, so to that extent, like, it impacts all of us, but I think that you're drawing, you're drawing from the planning board for your area of experience and expertise, and you're doing what you think is best. I don't think that we're entitled to it, and I don't think that you should need to run things by us anymore than you would run by any other member of the community if you wanted to.
But you should definitely feel free to contact anyone that has experience or ideas just to see.
Well, it wouldn't have hurt, it wouldn't have hurt. If something controversial or something with a large dollar number comes up, that I can run it by the board, I like to have the opportunity to run it by the board, just to get a feel for what the board thinks.
I'm sure if you're requested, but something...
You know what I mean, I think I, I can get all runners, you know, and say, look, I'd like to put this on the agenda, just run it by the board and see what they think.
When you get the proposed thing on Wednesday, if you wanna talk, just tell me you wanna talk about something.
Well, usually have, if something really big comes up, it involves a lot of money, we'll discuss it on the CPA, and then they'll give us like a month to think about it, okay? So, that'll, when that happens, that'll give me plenty of opportunity to put it on our agenda to bring it before the board, so I'll have a good idea, what do people think? I respect your opinion.
Well, I also don't think it's a, it's like a public notice thing, so I think you can bring it up as public speak, whatever you think of it, I mean, it's not, we're not voting on how you have to vote, so if you wanna bring it up just to get our feedback, I don't think it's any different than somebody raising an issue from the audience.
Yeah, I got right there.
Putting it on the agenda.
I would just feel free to do that whenever you're thinking about something.
Man, I was thinking about that, you know, I'm going, because I never give it a second thought. I mean, I go to the meetings, then something comes up, so, you know, they discuss it and then you have to talk about it and talk about it, talk about it. And, okay, well, that sounds pretty good, so it'll be like a, you know, nine oh or whatever vote. And most of the stuff is small, it's not no big deal. But, there has been something done on that board that happened a few years back, and I'm not gonna mention where or when or how. And I'm sitting there going, huh? How would that happen? You know, I mean, there's, seriously, I mean, but, you know, things are over the dam.
He must have put the secretary to work to get a list of the entire events over a year.
Well, it's, it's...
Bob's an accountant, so he's got, he's got great control. He's got a spreadsheet with everything.
I got all the respect in the world for that guy, so, it's quite the, quite the guy.
Plus the fact that if there is something, you just say, why don't you go to the meeting?
No, I'm not gonna go there.
What's next?
All right, so that's probably out of sync.
I thought you were an accountant that wanted a home occupation permit.
I'd just like to bring up, for your consideration, the issue on eighteen Mechanic Street, I think that's the address, Liberty.
Is this the thing with ZVA?
It was, it was, came before us several meetings ago for an opinion on whether or not a variance should be granted for that project. I gave you all copies of the dispatches again. And when I read through it and was a little disappointed in the language on, on the variance granting, I wanna know what other board members feel, whether this is something that they think that this board should appeal, or whether we are better off to just leave things at eye. It is within the purview of this board, should it choose to file appeal if it goes up to land court. I don't want this to be an adversarial thing, this is, my concern here is that variances are something that have very clear-cut points, it was the opinion of this board that it didn't meet the criteria. I've given you copies of the decision, I gave another copy where I wrote the actual letter of the law, thirteen point one-three, the findings, and put in italics the findings that were cited as justification for the variance.
Is that this?
Yes, that's that.
Can I tell you yours?
That's yours.
Whoa. No, Harry, you go first.
Sure?
Yeah.
The part that I don't seem to understand about this, is if something is against the law, and it, then it shouldn't even be looked at, it shouldn't even, if something is gonna be, you know, unlawful or whatever, then why are we even discussing it? What do we even, why should it even be proposed?
It's not that it's, it comes down to interpretation is the issue, it's interpretations by different parties, I mean, that's why we have such a litigious...
I think that's exactly, I mean, I think that this is, the zoning board's purview, they made a judgment call on whether or not they thought this was a variance, we didn't have the applicant in front of us, we, even if all was with the applicant in front of us may have decided differently, I think that looking at litigation against another board for something like this that's within their judgment is not a very good idea, I think it, besides sort of the political and community ramifications, I just think it's a judgment call, and we all make judgment calls on these things every meeting, and I don't think that we're in a very good position to second guess them. And I would defer to them as the board that have the authority and held the hearing on it.
I think it's, I think it's fine to decide that, and my issue is that I want us to discuss that as a board and not, this is not, you know, about trying to railroad anything, so I think that that's a valid point, and it's not something that I didn't think about before I brought this up.
I agree with you.
We should have at least a discussion, at least for the board, whether we have the power to change or not, at least we can discuss it.
What we gave back to them after we discussed it the first time, do you recall?
It was a five-four, a five-zero opinion, not to recommend that it didn't meet the criteria of a variance.
So, the planning board gave them the recommendation in writing?
Right.
That's, I just didn't know if we'd actually physically, okay. And anywhere in here, did they show, I mean, they say, after hearing from and questioning the applicant?
We received all the information.
They just didn't make any note of the fact that it was a factor?
They commented at the meeting.
They didn't read it into the record? I was at the meeting, I recorded it. They initially couldn't find the recommendation, none of them seemed to have it. And then they were given the information, and they passed it around and looked at it. And so, then they didn't read, they didn't read the recommendation into the record, as has been the habit of, you know, the board, at least when I was on it and certainly beyond that time. So, it wasn't really considered very hard, you know, the information, in my opinion.
Well, I think that's their purview, they're the ones making the decision on this, and if it did go out, whether or not they considered it appropriately or not, is really something that we should let them know that we're upset about, but I don't think litigation's the right answer in this case.
I totally agree with that, but normally, no, no. I probably would have granted that variance, because I was under the impression it was actually unlawful, when we were discussing that. Because the way I looked at it, the variance, he was looking for, can we, can we talk about it? Do I see that whole thing, what was, what was wrong about the building? It wasn't gonna infringe on anything. There wasn't any, anything in the back, wasn't any sidewalks, there wasn't any road, it was just gonna be like an overhang going at like nowhere. So, if it was possible to grant a variance, I couldn't see what the big deal of all it was. But then they say, well, there's a precedent, it's gonna be established, well, everyone is different, that's why it's a variance, it's not the law, it's everything, everyone you look at is different. If something is gonna be built, there is nothing behind it, on the side of it's gonna infringe on anything, then why not go with it?
Well, actually, the overhang, where it goes into the setback is on the side of a very narrow road, which perhaps if the road is thought to be widened at any point, if it needs to be, then the overhang may be an issue. There are a lot of reasons why these, you know, this is written into ordinance and building code, for instance, that overhangs are given a certain latitude, but there is a, you know, there is a line drawn, again, intruding to a, you know, setback by two feet. I don't know all the reasons, I know what you're mentioning about other structures around would be one of the reasons, because then you're putting, you know, what could quite possibly be flammable structure near another property or another structure. But, but I think the important thing here is that, and I, first of all, I would say I agree with James, what he said about, you know, the purview of the ZVA to do this. What bothered me about the way that the hearing went is, and I've observed a lot of hearings that involve a lot of issues, and they're all different, but this one was one where the outcome was really, they were very hard, the applicant didn't present the hardship. That's one of the things you have to do, you have to, you have to present why it is you're asking for the variance, you know, why specifically, but it was rather almost fabricated...
variance, you know, why specifically, but it was rather almost fabricated in real, right there at the meeting, it was like, well, let me see, what could we think of as being the hardship? Oh, well, that a car in the parking lot maybe doesn't have as much turning radius. Instead of discussing making the building narrower, or changing the style of the building, why this overhang has to go into the setback is, there's no real reason for it, except the reason given at the meeting was, well, it's meant to look like an old railroad depot, and they have wide overhangs, and so you see, we couldn't build this building and have it look like it does if it didn't have the wide overhang, and that's why we need the variance. Well, that doesn't really rise to the level of the intent of the variance. So, it was just my opinion that, from being there, and it is recorded, and anybody can watch it, and you can draw your own conclusion, is that the ZVA engineered on the spot all the reasons, they supplied the applicant with all the reasons for why they could get the variance. One was that the lot is triangular shape, or, I guess more importantly, not a rectangle or a square, but there's no, there are no particular inclusions on the lot that would prevent it, no body of water, no, you know, thing that was insurmountable that would cause the building to have to be exactly where it is, but, instead of moving the building three feet, and not requiring a variance, or making it a little bit smaller, these are the things, in other words, there are remedies other than a variance, variances should be a remedy of almost last resort, because there is a real hardship. In this case, there's nothing there, they're creating the hardship, it's a self-created...
Right.
What's that?
Did you speak to Eric?
Well, I spoke only when it became apparent to me that the recommendation letter wasn't in their hands, and they weren't even going toward it, then I spoke. I try not to speak on a recording, but I did, I don't really, you know, I try not to, but I did, I wanted to know what happened to the recommendation, why they hadn't even, why it hadn't been read into the record, why it wasn't being addressed. And I do think it's important, when, when I was on the ZVA, and even afterwards, and Jesse, you were on the ZVA, it was recommendations from the planning board where they would be read into the record, and they were, they had some weight, you know, it was like...
I think we usually gave an instruction that they didn't really. We'd read into the record, but that we don't give it any more weight, and we look at this, you know, fresh from the applicant's present presentation in their, in their application, but I think it's good form to read into the record, I mean, I think that that's not good practice to not have it there, I mean, but...
You don't think it should have any effect when a committee, you know, you ask for a recommendation, comes back and votes zero to five against?
And that was...
No weight?
I don't know that.
That was, at one time, when recommendations came from other boards, or ZVA, and they wanted our opinion, a lot of times we would just put that, we have no opinion, because, as he said, it would go in, but they didn't take it as any weight, so why should you ask us for an opinion?
We've been...
When that should have some weight, and like, when they didn't read it in, and they didn't have our recommendation, and they had to pass it around to read it then and there, that, what I would say, had no real...
The truth is, whether or not, as long as they had an opportunity to look at it, how they value it is entirely up to...
But no, I don't think it's fair to characterize it as them asking for our advice, I mean, they're required to give notice, and we're required to look at that by the bylaws, it's not like they're deferring to our judgment, you know, I mean, maybe that it's more significant that it's in the bylaws that they're supposed to ask our opinion, but they certainly aren't making the determination we should seek out the planning board's input. I think it's one of these things, I mean, Harry's ready to allow the variance now, I mean, I think the thing is, is that these are all tough calls, and variances, I mean, from town to town, it's a coin toss based on whether people are giving them out like candy, or you can't get them at all, and I think, I mean, whether we think the ZVA did or didn't make the right decision in this case, I think the ZVA made their decision, and if, you know, private people want to, you know, appeal to Superior Court or Land Court...
There was one other, there was one other part, and I think this is important as well, that, and I don't know if it affected the decision or not, I really have no idea, but the applicant stated that, when I brought that up about where is, you know, the planning board recommendation, the applicant stated that, I think it was stated something like, well, that's not really true, the planning board didn't have the plans in front of them, so they didn't really have anything to go on, or something like that, and, of course, we did, I mean, we sat here and looked at the plans, right, so, and there were no, there was no inquiry into that, like, you know, is that, is that true, really? I mean, so, I, again, it's their decision, but on the other hand, if, I know we were at this, we were asked fairly recently if we wanted to do recommendations, you know, if this is something we wanted to continue to do, and I think the board agreed that this is something we would do. I certainly would like to continue doing them, because it's something that's actually written into statute.
It gives a sense of what the other committees are doing too, it's like a cross...
Exactly, yeah, and it's good, but, but if they're really meaningless, I understand now, you know, the kind of dilemma, if you have a board that has no respect for other people who study the ordinance, and apply it, and consider it, and actually spend the time to do this, and then, if they have a different opinion, that's one thing, in my view, the opinion was, it wasn't, it was a very engineered decision, and... All right, well, I just want to make sure that we can talk about this, Harry, you got some thoughts this way?
Yeah, I lost my train of thought.
Oh.
Oh, okay. I don't, I don't have the minutes or the presentation of that project that originally was proposed to us by Autumn Properties, but I remember being on the board, what was that, like, two years ago, check you on more, at least two years ago, if I remember correctly, with the proposal of that building that was going to be on that, on that piece of property, because it was triangular, at the time, we couldn't figure out if there was a road, if it was in front, if that was private, public, or what it was, okay? There was a building that was going to be proposed for that piece of property, and I can't for life even remember if the design, and the setbacks, was on that proposal, because even back then, if that proposal with that, with that building on that property, that would have been noted, we could have seen it right there, that the overhang was needed a variance.
No, this is a different design, they changed it.
Is that what they did?
They moved the...
Yeah, which is...
Previous. Which, again, I mean, and apparently, that permit to do that structure is still valid, so they, so without getting a variance, they have use of the lot, and benefit of the lot, and can build on the lot, but, but instead chose not to do that.
All right, I didn't realize that they had changed that, okay. I'm just trying to figure out how that got by us, because we would have seen that, you know, when we were looking at it.
The first plan didn't have it.
Yeah, that's why, you know, that's why, I just have to think, I'm going, well, gee, we passed that, so I didn't realize that they had changed that. But getting back to your point of view there, whether they could just move the building here or there, or whatever, I totally agree with you, I mean, why submit something that you know was wrong, well, before you even built it?
It's called having your cake and eating it.
It doesn't make any sense.
But anyway, without even having in mind what your hardship is, and allowing, you know, a board to decide what the hardship is for you, which, again, I thought was kind of odd, but, that really doesn't...
I'd like to just add one point, if I could, in kind of closure for me, and it's, it seems like the only actionable item we can really do here is to improve the relationship with the ZVA to the point where we both respect each other's, and maybe there's some sort of overture that could be made, so therefore, recommendation comes from either side, we take the time to look at it.
But I think, you know, that they have, they have, they have to also have a free, somewhat free hand, I just...
Yeah, I have never seen that the ZVA, nine out of ten times, or all the time, they would come and ask the planning board for their opinion, and we would give it. There were times, and I'm going back even further, which I don't, you know, back in eighty-two.
Back in the stagecoach?
Yeah, and beyond that, the recommendations of the planning board was really taken to heart, and as it went on and on, it was just taken as, this is the planning board recommendations, and like now, and things like now, if someone didn't catch it, that would never have gotten into the record, and God, and who knows how many others that never got put into the record.
But the other thing is, when we talk about these things, we don't give public notice, we don't have the applicant in front of us, it's not a public hearing, I mean, we don't have the full picture, so to let us force down the rubber stamp our decision, we're not fully informed when we do that, so I think that there's a risk to give too much weight to what a board that's not fully informed says, and I mean, I think in this case, you might say, well, duh, you dropped the ball, because that's what, you know, a group of us would have done, but I think it's a, it's a bad road to head down, I think that you run, I mean, we want our own autonomy too, you know, and I think that we defer to them on these decisions and hope...
All we do is give a, you know, give a recommendation, and they can take it with a grain of salt, but if they ask us for a granted, a recommendation or an opinion, we should at least honor that and say, this is our opinion. Whether we have the plans in front of us or not, they basically give us an idea of what is needed and what they want, and then we can take and go by what we've done previously and say, well, we never, we didn't allow the variance for this in the past, why should it be now? Because the ZVA, well, they can override certain things, but at least the recommendation or opinion should continue to go there, you know, not to stop or anything, it's, it's a good relationship in that form.
I think we talked with Jesse.
Yes, we did.
I agree with Jesse, all right, if we're going to give an opinion, you know, if we're talking about an opinion, that's going to be with weight, that we should either have the applicant here or whatever, I mean, and get into some kind of detail.
Well, in general, what we do is we qualify, we send the applicant, we haven't been able to, you know, answer questions, because the applicant's not complete...
And that's why we can't give a...
But, based on what's in front of us, we recommend, you know, whatever, which I think is fine, but it's certainly not a fully informed decision to make, most of the time.
Send us the applicant. Don't, I think there's much to be done, other than just having talked about it, I think, maybe going forward, there could be some back and forth between boards, but I think we've gone far enough with this.
Have we had, have we ever had any boards come back at us with something that we approved, or we, or we're going to approve, and then say they don't want it, and then have them come before us and tell us why? Has that ever happened, like conservation or...
You tell us.
Housing or...
You're long enough yet for that.
Well, yeah.
The only thing that would come back at us, would be public opinion, that...
Public opinion, for sure.
Public opinion is...
Hang on, I...
Yeah, that's, that's another story.
Is there a motion to adjourn, or?
I made that motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'll favor it.
All right.
You guys want...